Hey, Tom, what's up?
Councilor Basman. Chair Beal.
Here.
Councilor Woodruff.
Here.
Mayor Protamiazzi.
Here.
Councilor Youssef.
Here.
Item 1.1, reading of the Indigenous land acknowledgement. This is a call to honor and respect Indigenous sovereignty and self-determination. As residents and visitors of Durango, we are called upon to educate ourselves about the history and cultural heritage of the land we inhabit. The city of Durango is situated on the ancestral homelands and territories of the N'uchu Ute, Hicaría Apache, Apache, Pueblos of New Mexico, Hopi-Sinom, Hopi, and Dene Navajo nations. The original stewards of this land were forcibly removed and exposed to countless atrocities by the United States government, including repeatedly broken treaties, forced assimilation, the tragic legacy of Indian boarding schools, and the loss of ancestral homelands. We recognize lasting generational trauma exists within Native communities today. We affirm the continuing importance of ancestral sites to descendant communities as integral to the living cultural landscape. This acknowledgement only becomes meaningful when combined with accountable relationships and informed actions. May this serve as a step towards inclusion and reconciliation. Thank you. Item two, introduction of the translator. Is the translator online?
Yes, Liz Torres should be able to unmute themselves and give the introduction.
Hi, good evening. My name is Liz Torres, and I will be your Spanish interpreter for today. I'm here with the CLC. And so we are going to be interpreting today from Spanish to English and English to Spanish. Once we turn that on, you'll be able to select your language, English or Spanish. And if you're bilingual, you do not need to select one. We do ask that you please speak at a conversational pace so that we are able to provide an accurate rendition of your message. Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Liz Torres, y estaremos el día de hoy interpretando del inglés a español y español a inglés simultáneamente. Ya que se enciende la función de interpretación, va a poder seleccionar inglés o español. Y si usted es bilingüe, no necesita seleccionar ninguna. Les pedimos que, por favor, hablen a un ritmo de conversación para así poderles brindar una interpretación precisa de su mensaje. And we can go ahead and get started.
Great. Item three, opening remarks by mayor and council. Does anyone have any?
Item number three, apertura.
Item three, opening remarks by mayor and council. Does anyone have any opening remarks today? Great. Item four, presentations and proclamations. We're going to share the workload on this one, just so I don't have to drone on all early of this meeting. So item 4.1, recognition of Durango Olympians and World Champions. I'm going to kick it over to Councilor Woodruff.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. We all know that Durango is a unique and special place, and the people that we choose to call this place home make it one of a kind. Adding to this character of our small town in southwest Colorado, we feel the need to recognize so many of our world champions and Olympians. For such a small town, we have quite the number of athletes representing Durango on the international stage. I'd like to welcome Gage Sippy to the lectern, and while he needs no introduction, truly, Gage is the former director of the Iron Horse Bicycle Classic, a critical member of the Durango Mesa Foundation, and making that dream a reality. And then, most recently, Durango Chamber of Commerce's Citizen of the Year at 2023's Durango Rocks Awards. Would you like to introduce all the Olympians? That would be great. And, oh yeah, click the button. And then, yeah, Gage, thank you and welcome.
You're welcome. Thank you, Council, City Manager, everybody for having us this evening. It's pretty unique to have this many Olympians in one town, as Dave mentioned. And so tonight, this past year, at the 2024 Olympics, we had four Durango residents that raced on the mountain bike team for the USA. So that was a big year, excuse me, three from Durango, four total. And so I'm going to introduce those folks tonight. So I'm hoping we've got two of them online with us. So the first one I'm going to introduce is Christopher Blevins. So if Christopher's there, I don't know if he is or not. Okay. So Christopher's born and raised kid in Durango here. This is his second Olympics. He's also a world champion. He also led the team to the Team Relay World Championship this year. So that's person number one this year that did some incredible things for Durango. Person number two is online with us, and that is Sevillea Blunk. And she is, came to Durango via Fort Lewis College. And we've claimed her entirely, even though she is actually from California. But Sevillea represented our Olympic team this year. And so we want to thank Sevillea. She had an incredible year. She also had a very strong showing in the World Cup. She's been our former national champion. And once again, she still uses our zip code as her residence. So thank you, Sevillea, for your accomplishments this year, and congratulations. Moving down the list, this next person had the year he probably never dreamed. He was, well, I think both of them didn't have, had a year they didn't think they were going to have. So I'm first going to introduce Riley Amis. So Riley had an incredible year. He won the Mountain Bike World Cup overall in the U-23s. I think he won about five World Cups in both short track and cross country. And then he made it to the Olympic team, and in his very first time racing with the elites, got seventh. So Riley, and he also... He finished that off with winning the World Championship. He finished that off with winning the World Championships in short track a month later. And so Riley had trouble carrying all the medals and stuff around with him this year. So Riley is another young man raised here in Durango. And then lastly, the young, the young one of the bunch, Asa Vermette. So Asa is 17 years old. You've probably read about him in the paper. And Asa, this year, won the downhill World Championships for the juniors. And so this, so for Durango this year, we have had two world champions, three Olympians, and we also won the Team Relay. We had team members on the Team Relay. So for those that don't know this... Mountain biking was introduced at the Olympics in 1996, and there has been a rider from Durango on the team every year since, or every Olympic since that time. And so I don't know many other communities that can claim that, but we absolutely can. So congrats to all these riders on an amazing season, and you got a lot of shoes to fill next year. So keep it up.
We'll have the riders come up here for a picture. All right, next up, we have item 4.2, proclamation recognizing Durango American Legion Buddy Poppy Days. If you'll meet me up. This is awkward because it's like, I'm looking this way and everyone's behind me. All right. Proclamation recognizing Durango American Legion Buddy Poppy Days, November 8th through November 11th, 2024. Whereas the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the Durango American Legion Post 28 has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since the 1900s. And whereas American Legion Buddy Poppies are assembled by disabled veterans, and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used for the rehabilitation of disabled and needy veterans, widows, and orphans of deceased veterans to complement funds for youth programs such as Boys and Girls State... Oratorical?
Oratorical.
Oratorical, that was rough. I can't see. Oratorical contest, that's better. Sports and, sports and school scholarship programs. And whereas the basic purpose of the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the American Legion is eloquently reflected in the desire to make our community a better place and continuously demonstrating the compassion heart for those who serve our country and protect our freedoms. Now therefore I, Jessica Buell, Mayor of Durango, Colorado, do proclaim November 8th through November 11th, 2024, as Durango American Legion Buddy Poppy Days. And do hereby urge the citizens of the community to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously to its support by the obtaining of Buddy Poppies on the days set aside for distribution of these symbols of appreciation for the sacrifices of our honored veterans. The officers and members of the Durango American Legion Post 28 urge all patriotic citizens to wore Buddy Poppy as mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this community who have risked their lives in defense of these freedoms, which we continue to enjoy as American citizens.
Thank you so much. Yeah. And you can say a few words? First, I just wanted to thank everybody for attending Saturday to our mural down here. We're your neighbors, and we're trying to get that corner really looking nice. And it will be finished, barring any more weather or health issues with the artists. I just wanted to say thank you and let you know that a little bit about the Poppies. The American Legion's the world's largest women's patriotic service organization. And I say that because it is our auxiliary ladies that, that do this distribution. About the poppy, like, like she said, it symbolizes freedom and the blood sacrificed by troops during war. And the Poppies actually came up on, on top of newly dug soldiers' graves during World War I in Europe. The American Legion Auxiliary adopted the poppy as its memorial flower in 1921 and started its poppy program in 1924. And may I read the poem? Do we have time? Okay. This is by Lieutenant Colonel John McCray, December 8th, 1915. In Flanders Fields, the Poppies blow between the crosses row on row that mark our place, and in the sky, the larks still bravely singing fly. Scarc, scarce heard amid the guns below. We are the dead. Short days ago, we lived, felt down, saw sunset glow. Loved and we are loved, and now we lie in Flanders Fields. Take up our quarrel with the foe, to you from failing hands we throw. The torch be yours to hold it high. If ye break faith with us who die, we shall not sleep, though Poppies grow in Flanders Fields. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next up is 4.3, proclamation recognizing November as National American Indian Heritage Month. We're going to have Mayor Protem Yasi read the proclamation and invite anyone from the Southern Ute Indian Tribe, and who's going to accept the proclamation?
Daughters of American Revolution.
Yes, yes, yes. So you're going to come up and accept the proclamation, and then we'll have members of the tribe as well. Come on. Nope, you're going to go up there.
Whereas the history and culture of our great nation and the state of Colorado have been significantly influenced by American Indians and Indigenous people. Whereas we recognize the Nuchu tribes' Utes as the oldest continuum residents and stewards of the land now known as the state of Colorado. Whereas the contributions of the American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of the United States of America today. Whereas their custom, sovereignty, and traditions are respected and celebrated as a part of a rich legacy throughout the United States. And whereas the city of Durango is on the historic homelands and is presently neighbors to the sovereign nations of the Southern Ute Indian Tribe and the Ute Mountain Ute Indian Tribe. Whereas the Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and was expanded by Congress and approved by the President George Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. And now therefore I, Gil de Yasi, Mayor Protem of the City of Durango, do hereby proclaim November 2024 as National American Indian Heritage Month. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I am Patricia Joy, Vice Region of Sarah Platt Decker Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution. And this is Leslie Orr, our Chapter American Indian Chairperson, who worked to have this proclamation happen. Colorado is home to over 20 various Native American tribes, and we are proud of the history and culture that has greatly enhanced this state. All of us benefit from the contributions of Native Americans and their historic legacy. Our Chapter and the National Daughters of the American Revolution are proud that we can thank you for your contributions to America that we celebrate today. It is a well-known fact that various Native tribes sided with the American colonists and fought to secure our independence from Great Britain. This organization, the Daughters of the American Revolution, is making great efforts to make sure that your people's efforts are recognized and celebrated. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Marvin Finikus. I'm the treasurer, council member with Southern Ute Indian Tribe. We're also called the Pinuch, which is the Pine River Utes, because we're situated along the Pine River there. Of the two federally recognized tribes in the state, which is ourselves, and the Ute Mountain Tribe located near Cortez, Colorado, we are one of only two federally recognized tribes within the state. And we thank you for the land acknowledgement. It helps us kind of, in our efforts to let people know that we're, not only have we been here in the past, but that we continue to do so. Real quick, though, I wanted to thank the Daughters of the American Revolution. In eighth grade, I did a history paper, and I got a medal from them. And it was one of the first awards I ever had that had a recognition attached to it. And it made me think about, you know, when that, those things happen, makes you feel good, and makes you want to keep going on. So in the spirit of continuing education, I think you guys sowed a seed that allowed me to move forward and attain two bachelor's degrees, one master's certificate, as well as two community certificates in trade. So, you know, the idea that small actions matter, and I want to thank you guys for that on my behalf. I would ask the rest of the council to just make some quick comments. In our culture of being Nuch Ute people, we defer to our elders to speak for us because of their wisdom and the lot of stuff they carried over. But I do remember growing up, you know, a lot of stuff that happened in my life happened here in this very city. I remember going to Woolsworth down here to get some toys and their soda. I remember going to Kmart at the Durango Mall, and Chelsea's was there, and Kachina Kitchen used to be located over there as well, too, as well as the various theaters that you had on Main Street. I remember going and putting my coins in those little machines on the side, and those little machines would be animated. So as residents of not just the state of Colorado, but La Plata County, and we do have tribal members that do reside in the city of Durango, we are residents of this town as well, too. When we come to town to shop, we come here to get groceries, to go to Walmart, to patronize the restaurants, and to stay here and enjoy ourselves the same as everyone else. So with that, we stand beside you, proud people and inclusive of the diverse culture that this area offers, and we're proud to do that. And with that, I'll turn it over to our elders and let them speak a little bit, as well as our tribal council. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Marjorie Berry. I am serving on the tribal council, but I have also worked for very many years for the Southern Ute Tribe. It is indeed an honor and a pleasure to be here tonight to, to accept this proclamation from the DAR, the Daughters of the American Revolution. We have a memorial in Ute Park. And back in the day, back in the day when funds were very hard to come by and we were all struggling with poverty, the Daughters of the American Revolution paid for one of the plaques for one of our four chiefs that is, that is still standing in our Southern Ute tribal park.
Thank you for that.
Yes, the Daughters of the American Revolution recognized our tribe early on in those years when we were struggling for recognition with the federal government as well. I would like to tell each and every one of you that we share the citizenship of this nation, the members of this community, this county, and this town of Durango, as we all want to succeed. We want our people to succeed. We want to be economically stable. We want our country to flourish. And with that, we want to continue a positive relationship with the city of Durango, the county, and the state. Thank you so much.
Hello, everyone. My name is Marty Finikus. I'm with the tribal council from Ignacio. I'd like to welcome and say thank you for your words. Thank you for all your prayers. Thank you for what you believe in and everything. For everyone here, you know, we are all of different cultures, of all different races, but we all must live together. We all must be able to strive together and be humble. Stay humble, stay strong, believe in each other, and dreams do come true. And to the council, I say thank you for welcoming us, and always, we will always welcome you. So I say thank you. In many ways, for our disacknowledgement, it is very important to acknowledge Native Americans in this way, and many cultures. So just keep believing in each other. And I say thank you for all of you being here. Stay strong and keep believing. I say thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Councilman Andrew Daigos. Just want to say thank you, not only as a council member for, you know, this historic day, but also as a travel member. I'm a travel member first before a council member. But just want to say thank you, you know, again, and, you know, to help educate the current residents and the future residents that, you know, you're standing on traditional homelands of the Ute people. As mentioned by my colleagues, you know, this is, was once Ute territory that not only us, Southern Utes, but the Ute Mountain Utes and our sister tribe, the Northern Utes, but they reside in Utah, Fortissane, Utah. But, you know, we're focusing on the two federally recognized tribes here in Colorado. Just with that, you know, thank you, and we can always build a better working relationship in the future. So whatever happened in the past, that's in the past. I look forward to, you know, many more consultations and a better tomorrow. Thank you.
All right, moving right along. Number five, city manager updates. We have 5.1, Economic Development Council of Colorado's Recognition of Durango as 2024 Small Community of the Year, and Tommy Crosby, Economic Opportunity Manager, as 2024 Rookie of the Year. Any manager?
Yes, we'll have a staff presentation from Scott Shine to share some great news of the city of Durango being recognized at the state level.
Thank you, Jose. Madam Mayor, members of the council. It's an honor to share not just one, but two awards tonight. The city recently received in recognition of our economic development efforts. I wish all of you could have been there at the ceremony to receive the awards, because it was very exciting to have our work acknowledged in front of over 300 economic development professionals from around the state as being the best of the best. It was, it was a lot of fun, particularly because it was also an 80s ski-themed award ceremony. So it was a good time. I wish you all were there, but you were in the budget retreat, which I'm sure was much more fun. As you may know, the Economic Development Council of Colorado is a statewide nonprofit organization dedicated to successful and responsible economic development across the state. EDCC represents the interests of public and private sectors and provides high-quality educational opportunities, trusted resources, and advocates for sound policies and programs that support a vibrant economy and enhance quality of life for all Coloradans. The city is a member of EDCC. We have representation on the board there and are involved in the Public Policy Committee there as well. So you do definitely have a voice at the state level in regards to economic development work. Durango is recognized as the Small Community of the Year. That's for a community under 20,000. Durango is recognized as the Small Community of the Year. That's for a community under 20,000 people. And EDCC specifically recognize the following items. Innovative economic leadership by implementing strategic leadership and bold initiatives that have significantly enhanced the local economy. Collaborative economic development nurturing a unified vision for economic growth. Our urban renewal and housing initiatives were called out as crucial for the economic prosperity of our community and support for entrepreneurs and the creative economy, particularly the dramatic increase in arts and culture spending from $3 per capita to $29 per capita, given the lodgers' tax efforts and other partnerships with the Creative District. Our efforts to support underserved food entrepreneurs have furthered enhanced inclusivity within the community. For the second award, EDCC recognized the city's very own Tommy Crosby for his outstanding contributions to local economic development and leadership in this field. Tommy was awarded this year's Rookie of the Year Award for the following achievements. Innovative economic development initiatives. Tommy designed and implemented Durango's first-ever economic development incentive program, which was approved unanimously by council in May 2024. That's aimed at helping local businesses grow and retain jobs while preventing relocation. The creative economy and arts support, Tommy's been pivotal in coordinating grants through the Creative District and has supported 109 projects with over $1.5 million in funding since 2022. It's amazing, the volume of projects that Tommy's been able to support. Each one of those represents a partnership with a local nonprofit or an artist that he's nurtured. The success with the Urban Renewal Authority and regional collaboration and relationship building was also called out as support for this award for Tommy. So there you have it, two statewide awards for our economic development programming and staff in one fell swoop. These awards are not about being better than anything or better than anyone else, but rather, I think there are chances to reinforce who we are and who we aspire to be on a variety of levels. As an award to our community, I believe this recognition reinforces the importance of continuing to seek out the common good and to serve our entire community through cooperative and innovative programs. As an award to our organization, it demonstrates that day in and day out, many individuals across many departments are working together to provide outstanding services and experiences to the entire community. And this results in expanded economic opportunities for current and future Durangontangs. As an award to an individual, Mr. Crosby, it's a chance to pause amidst the daily grind and sometimes frenzied workload and to express gratitude to those who are working thoughtfully and passionately in service to something greater than themselves. Thank you, Tommy, for your hard work and servant leadership. Lastly, this community award is also a recognition of the effectiveness of Durango's elected officials. So congratulations to you, City Council. These awards and the projects that are being highlighted reflect how your leadership on economic development initiatives is making a tangible impact in people's lives. I know your work is difficult and that it's challenging to keep the big picture in mind. I hope these awards help you to see that your work is making a difference and that it encourages you to keep looking for ways to unify our community and advance collaborative solutions. Thank you for your support and leadership.
I, real quick, thank you for presenting that. You can stay up here, too. You're part of the Community Development Department. I want to say thank you for presenting that and giving kind of a background, since we had to miss it for the budget retreat. I do want to say thank you to the entire Community Development Department for your creativity and constantly pushing the envelope and making us better and bringing to us great projects to approve and move forward in our city. Tommy, specifically, just from working with you on the CEC in the beginning years, when you first started and I first started, I think we started like at the same time, to the work you do on the URA. I've seen you do presentations with the Alliance and La Plata Leadership before, I think. I've seen numerous. And you always go above and beyond. You're always so prepared. And what you bring to the city of Durango is remarkable, so I'm super excited that you're a part of our team. So thank you for making us better and making us, I think, look good, to be honest, so. Item 5.2, Presentation by Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment on Fluoride Recommendation in Public Drinking Water?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this item was placed on the agenda as we've received some emails regarding a recent court ruling out in, I think it was Northern California. Mark, you might be able to help me on that part of it, where that jurisdiction is. But regarding a recent finding with the EPA and about fluoride levels in public drinking water. Since then, we've received some emails regarding concerns about fluoride in our public drinking water. And with that, the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment asked if they could, or I believe we reached out to them, if they could provide a presentation to the council just to provide some more information specifically on what the recommendations are from the state to kind of give us a little bit more background information on what is going on with this recent ruling. I don't know, Mark, if you have anything to add?
Yeah, I mean, Durango has a history with this issue. One of our former neighbors called me and gave me some background on it. But significantly, what occurred was there is a court ruling out of Northern California on September 24th of 2024 that has caused the matter, just to come into the public focus again. What I understand is going to be a presentation tonight from the Colorado Department of Water. I have fully read the court case. I can explain to you the jurisdictional details of that. But it is at the very beginning of the process. It's one district court in Northern California. We have a district court in Durango. So if you want details on how that applies or what it could be used for in the future, I can just tell you that it's a very early court decision that I expect will be appealed extensively.
Presentation? Great. Yeah. I think it was on. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, council members. My name is Mary Mahmood. I am the State Dental Director with the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. The Oral Health Unit is one of the oldest chronic disease prevention programs in the Health Department. The purpose of the unit has evolved considerably in 80 years, and today we do administer not only the Community Water Fluoridation Program, but also provider training, workforce development, and public health surveillance. So today, we're here to provide some information about water fluoridation, its impact and safety, and the recent ruling in California regarding water fluoridation. We also have Courtney Justice here with us, who is a registered dental hygienist and a regional oral health specialist from the La Plata County Public Health Department to present some local information as well. So there's misinformation and claims about water fluoridation, which are misleading and not representative of the science and research. But the facts and the evidence show that water fluoridation is safe, it is important for oral health, and it is the most equitable and cost-effective method of delivering fluoride to most communities. Water fluoridation is a public health intervention that's been studied thousands of times in peer-reviewed journals. At optimal levels, it presents no measurable risk to human health, cognition, or child development. On this slide are several peer-reviewed studies from well-respected scientific journals that support the safety of water fluoridation. These studies reconfirm the long-established positive effects of fluoride on oral health, and they show no effects on cognitive ability at the optimal level. CDPHE continues to align its public health recommendations with the latest scientific research. We regularly review new research from well-established sources. And currently, the evidence supports the recommended levels of fluoride in drinking water. In contrast to well-established scientific evidence, on September 25th of this year, the United States District Court in Northern California ruled that community water fluoridation at optimal levels poses an unreasonable risk to public health under the Toxic Substances Control Act. In its opinion, the court cited a report by the National Toxicology Program. While the ruling requires the EPA to take action, it did not ban or in any way limit the addition of fluoride to public drinking water supplies. The National Toxicology Program report that is cited by the judge explicitly states that there is not enough evidence to determine if the currently recommended levels of water fluoridation in the US has a negative effect on children's IQ. In fact, the report states that its findings should not apply to public policy regarding fluoride in drinking water. So the CDC has named community water fluoridation one of the 10 greatest public health interventions of the 20th century because of the dramatic decline in cavities since its implementation in 1945. The optimal level of fluoride in drinking water is 0.7 milligrams per liter, which is like one drop in 16 gallons of water. Even slightly above this level is not harmful. And at this dose, it is optimal for benefits from fluoride without the possible mild cosmetic side effects to developing teeth and tooth enamel. We have a shared goal of keeping communities safe and healthy. And research has shown that at this level, consumers receive the most benefit for the least amount of risk. The National Toxicology Report, which was the primary source of evidence used in the recent ruling, did not look at studies conducted with the recommended low levels of fluoride. Instead, they used research with levels more than twice the recommended amount, which has never been the level recommended here in Colorado. Durango water operators also consistently maintain an average monthly reading at the optimal level. Durango's water operators do a great job of regularly making sure your water is safe and healthy. They have received national and state annual awards consistently for more than 10 years. There are also hidden costs of oral disease. We know that fluoride is important to tooth structure, to prevent cavities, but good oral health is also connected to physical health, mental well-being, and overall health. Untreated cavities can cause many issues, including impaired nutrition and missed school and work. Having cavities as a child does increase the risk of developing cavities in permanent adult teeth. Fillings also may not last forever, and treated teeth may need up to over $6,000 in treatment over their lifespan. So while it depends on the community and the size, a Colorado study showed that community water fluoridation saved $61 per person per year in dental care. For Durango, this results in more than $2 million per year saved in averted dental costs. And even though three-quarters of Coloradans have access to fluoridated water, children and adults are still suffering from preventable cavities. A 2022-2023 School Oral Health Survey, called the Basic Screening Survey, showed that 46% of kindergarteners and 60% of third graders in Colorado have already experienced tooth decay. This data highlights the importance of community water fluoridation as an intervention that can reach a large population with health benefits that can last a lifetime. I'll turn it over to Courtney.
Thank you, Dr. Mahmood. So as Dr. Mahmood mentioned, I am the Regional Oral Health Specialist for La Plata County Public Health Department. But my catchment area does include La Plata, Archeleta, San Juan, Dolores, and Monizuma Counties. Part of my job as Regional Oral Health Specialist is to facilitate the school-based oral health program where I I see multiple schools from those counties. Last year, I saw 610 students within the school year. So this information on your screen is actually a risk stratification map. We developed a school-based study that shows us different data points to determine the risk levels of students across each of the schools. For La Plata County specifically, you can see that in the center of the map where Durango City Water is distributed, that the percentage there in the blue, that is actually the number of children at that facility that I saw that had active dental disease. And so the highest number is Riverview, but I actually only saw four kids there, so it's a skewed metric. But outside, the further you get away from that central water system, you'll see that the increase of cavities, sorry, increases with the reduction of optimal fluoride levels in their drinking water.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Tooth decay is the most common chronic disease in children and is significantly more common than asthma, obesity, and diabetes. It can largely be prevented through a combination of optimally fluoridated water, over-the-counter products containing a small amount of fluoride, and routine preventive dental care. So what happens if water fluoridation stops? Well, there has been research conducted in communities that once fluoridated but no longer do. So this research shows a spike in dental decay rates that can happen in as little as three years or less. In fact, Calgary saw a 146% increase in tooth decay rates after ceasing fluoridation, which then prompted the city to reintroduce fluoride in the water in 2021. What's concerning is that many of Colorado's counties are actually considered to be dental health professional shortage areas, which means that there are not enough dental providers to meet the needs of the population. Often, people have to wait for dental care due to a lack of available appointments, which increases the risk of cavities becoming an even more urgent infection. If left untreated, these infections can also become life-threatening. Many organizations have expressed support for water fluoridation, and over 100 respected scientific and health organizations support it, including past and current US Surgeon Generals.
Sorry, Mary. Allergies are acting up today. So in addition to cost savings, we also have a civic duty to protect the health of communities, which water fluoridation is one of our greatest tools to do so. So we urge everyone to take the long view when thinking about this public health intervention. Thank you, and please contact us if you would like more information.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Questions from council? Anything? Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, item six, Committee, Board, and Liaison Reports. You always go first.
Sure, yeah. Pick it off. Do a quick one. Didn't have a ton going on last few weeks. Had my community office hours this morning, which is great. Had it up at the library. Had a variety of conversations around parking, the botanical gardens, and pedestrian safety. So that was good to hang out with community members and discuss what is important to them. And also, Mayor Beal and I had the fortune to conduct Community and Cultural Relations Committee interviews a couple of weeks ago. And we have some great folks that we are really excited to bring into the commission. So, yeah, that was all I had to report.
All right, I will be quick. On October 17th, I met with the Durango Montessori School and did a presentation and a Q and A there. I had some really tough questions about how many people like me in Durango. That was a good one. What the world population is, but then some good ones. What do I like most? And what's the hardest about being on city council? So those are some of my favorite things to do as a city councillor and a mayor, is to go chat with the schools. So that was fun. On the 17th, I also had a meeting with the new CEO of the chamber, Jeff Dupont, about what's going on at the chamber and happenings. But Dave keeps us up to date with his monthly updates. We had the URA meeting on the 21st, which was great. We talked about Midtown. They had the bike lane by Durango Bike. They got a grant that was in Midtown and installed for a brief amount of time, which we got some great feedback on. Famburger really liked it. The concrete work is completely The concrete work is complete over by the powerhouse as part of the grant renewal through the URA over there. We talked about the North Main Gateway. They had a design charrette for the corner of Main and 32nd Street right there, which is a great partnership of the URA, Parks and Rec, and the Durango Creative District. We got an update on Durango Crossing and our budget proposal, so that was exciting. We had the 1917 East Third Avenue Community Meeting. I was supposed to be there, but then had a last-minute choir performance with one of the kiddos. So I couldn't make it, but I heard it ended well, a good understanding of the process, and then feedback from our community on the project, so that's great. On October 23rd, again, we have the Community Relations Commission interviews, like Dave mentioned. I did my walk-in role on the 30th up at the Hillcrest Neighborhood. And that was super interesting. We talked about the, in the spring and summer, we're going to have a temporary traffic calming measure put up there. They're one of the pilot areas that that's going to happen, so they were excited to hear about that. We talked a lot about the traffic that's on Gigline Gulch and Rim Drive over there, as well as access to Jenkins Ranch Park. There's like a trail over there and some other items from the community, so that was fun. And then I was part of the downtown trick-or-treating, which was mayhem with lots of kids and costumes, and so that was fun. All right, moving along. Item seven, public comment on action items only. Just as a reminder, this will not include item 10, because we're going to have a public meeting on that, a public hearing on that with item 10. So if you're talking about item 10, you'll wait to then. And it does not include the fluoride presentation we just heard, because we're not making any decisions on that today as a council. So if you're here to talk about fluoride, that will be in the next public. Item 13, the public comment on city manners not scheduled for a vote tonight. So just for the record. All right, go ahead and play the tape.
Hey, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Looks like we have four people signed up for this section. The first is Sarah Tober.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mayor Beal, City Council. Thank you for your time, Sarah Tober. I am the La Plata Economic Development Alliance Executive Director, and I'm here on item 12. It's on the Dark Sky Ordinance specifically. I just want to give accolades to the staff, to Lily Oswald and Mark Williams, as well as Scott Shine and Jose for prioritizing this so that the city of Durango can continue with the International Dark Sky Place Certification application. Sometimes these applications can take eight to 10 years. So us getting it done in a year is pretty unheard of. But I am also here as a city resident, as well as the first executive director of Dark Sky Colorado and the mentor assigned to the city of Durango last year to kind of kickstart things. And that was from Dark Sky Colorado and Colorado Tourism Office. So I'm very excited to see this progress. The ordinance was very intentional and thoughtfully inclusive to the community, as well as to Dark Sky International and Dark Sky Colorado. So it has been well-reviewed, and we are hoping that this will also simplify it. We don't want things to be too complicated for residents and business alike when it comes to dark sky standards. And we also know that this does have results in economic development in the form of astrotourism, as well as quality of life for residents. So just want to give everyone accolades on their work there and support that, as well as say that I'm also here if anybody has any questions about the Regional Housing Alliance of La Plata County Escalator.
Thank you. Next up would be Tim Pletcher.
Good evening, my name is Tim Pletcher. I live over on Rim Drive. I think you might have met some of my neighbors, so this might be a little bit overtaken by events. I'm a relatively new resident to Durango, coming here from 22 years in Austin. I walk two, three times, ride my bike frequently on that road. It is a disaster. On a good day, 20% of the people are observing this speedway. On a bad day, it is a free-for-all, Rim Drive. It wouldn't allow me to put an item in, so the signup form was borked up. So it let me put that in.
This is the time for comment on items that you'll be voting on tonight. Anything else comes under?
Fair enough.
You can come back under item 13.
Should I come back next two weeks from now, or? Oh, it wouldn't even let me sign up properly. So we can do this another time if you want. I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you. Next up would be Sweetie Marbury.
My name is Sweetie Marbury. I am a resident, and I came to talk about the budget tonight. First of all, I support the forestry budget. And there are three men that work in the forestry department. They handle 12,000 trees. And I support hiring outside contractors, especially because we live in an old part of town, west and east, and some of our trees are 10 stories tall. And during the storms, they fall, they break. So I would like to see that budget always improved. Also, I support the 3% raise for all employees. I think that's wonderful, and the employees are our backbone for the city. The third point I'd like to bring up is when you get to the lodgers tax, that I would like to see the city council use their discretionary funds for transportation instead of raising parking meters on the weekends, which I believe will be very contentious. Thank you very much.
One last one under this section, Adam Howell.
14.6 is new business, and so that will, that's to get it on an agenda later. So that you can sign up for item 13 if you want to talk about that. Anything city-related that isn't on the agenda for us, take action tonight.
And he has actually signed up under item 13 as well.
Perfect, okay, great. Is that it?
That's it.
Excellent. Moving along, we have item eight, the consent agenda. Can I have a reading of the consent agenda?
8.1 is approval of minutes. These are approval of minutes from the October 15th, 2024 City Council Regular Meeting. There are no items under 8.2. 8.3 is adoption of resolutions by consent. 8.3.1 is a resolution approving the operating plan and budget for the Durango Business Improvement District for the year 2025. 8.3.2 is a resolution authorizing an amendment to the funding agreement for the Regional Housing Alliance to increase the 2025 funding obligations in line with the United States Bureau of Labor Statistics Consumer Price Index. 8.3.3 is a resolution approving previously appropriated speed and distracted driving grant, high-visibility enforcement grant, and bulletproof best partnership grant. 8.3.4 is a resolution adopting an update to Durango's transit, Durango Transit's drug and alcohol policy in accordance with the Code of Federal Regulations Title 49. 8.3.5 is a resolution approving the renewal of the city of Durango's cable franchise agreement with Charter Communications. Items under 8.4 are approval of other administrative items. 8.4.1 is approval of a beer and wine license for the MCJW Wine Interest LLC, doing business as Barron's Creek Vineyards at 901 Main Avenue, Unit A. 8.5 is a request for a public hearing. This is a request for a public hearing for an introduction of an ordinance regarding the sale of city-owned property located at 166 East 33rd Street per City Charter Article 2, 11-D Conveyance of Rural Property to be held on November 19th. 8.6 are introduction of ordinances, with 8.6.1 being an introduction of an ordinance amending impertinent parts. The Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 3, Alcoholic Beverages, Section 3.3, Business Classifications. 8.6.2 is introduction of an ordinance amending impertinent part. The Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 23, Taxation, Article 2, Sales and Use Tax, Section 23-16. Words and phrases defined. 8.6.3 is introduction of an ordinance amending impertinent part. The Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 1, General Provisions, Sections 1-2, Definition Rules of Construction. 8.6.4 is introduction of an ordinance regarding the sale of a city-owned property located at 166 East 33rd Street per City Charter Article 2, Section 11D, Conveyance of Rural Property. 8.6.5 is introduction of an ordinance approving the sale of 209 West College Drive, Durango, to the Durango and Silverton Narrow Gauge Railroad Company. 8.6.6 is introduction of an ordinance appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies for operating expenditures for the city of Durango, Colorado, for the 2025 budget year. 8.6.7 is introduction of an ordinance appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies for capital expenditures for the city of Durango for the 2025 budget year, and there are no requests for excused absences.
Mayor and council from staff, we would ask that 8.5.1 be pulled. It's a duplicate, 8.5.1 and 8.6.4 are the same. So if we could just pull 8.5.1, and I'm not exactly sure the motion on that one or what we would do, but we don't need that one on there, 8.6.4, we'll take care of that one.
Yeah, once it gets pulled, we just have someone move to market moot, we'll be fine.
Okay.
Anyone else want to remove anything from the consent agenda?
I would like to remove 8.3.5, 8.6.5, 8.6.6, and 8.6.7.
I did not.
8.3.5, 8.6.5, 8.6.6.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of 8.3.5, 8.6.5, 8.6.6, 8.6.7, and 8.5.1.
I'll second.
Counsel discussion, can I get a roll call?
Mayor Beal?
Yes.
Councillor Youssef?
Yes.
Councillor Bosmans?
Yes.
Councillor Woodruff?
Yes.
And Mayor Protam Yazi?
Yes.
Okay, let's start with, we're on item nine, items pulled from the consent agenda. We'll start with 8.3.5, a resolution approving the renewal of the city of Durango's cable franchise agreement with Charter Communications. Councillor Bosmans?
Well, you need a motion first, so if someone makes a motion, I'll make my case.
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution for the approving the renewal of the city of Durango's cable franchise agreement with Charter Communications.
I'll second.
Counsel discussion.
So the reason I pulled this item is councillors requested to approve the agreement with Charter, probably a 10-year commitment. Apparently, there have been several months of negotiations, and it states that an updated agreement is being presented to council. I, as one councillor, have never seen an updated agreement, nor am I aware of anything that was negotiated. And even though this is likely a very straightforward process, it is listed as a consent agenda item for an immediate approval without review really by council that has no idea what they are approving. So I'm basically asking for some, some level of summary and update so that we, as a council, can know what we're stamping off on.
Happy to do that in anticipation of questions anyone might have. Jim Martin from my office is here. Jim, you can come up and answer any questions or explain what you did.
Good evening, Jim Martin with the City Attorney's Office, Assistant City Attorney. And I worked extensively with Charter Communications and their officers to basically compare what the city had in our previous, previous agreement with the prior, it was a different name, but basically it was a prior cable television company, and then what was being proposed with the new agreement. And basically also talked with the county. And this is a standard agreement that is used by all the local governments in the area, and it provides for revenue of 5% that comes to the city for all the revenues generated by Charter Communications. It's very standard, and most of it is governed by federal law.
And just for the benefit of the entire council, franchise agreements are fairly common in governments. It's where we grant a franchise to a particular utility provider, because you generally can't have more than one utility provider, and they pay us for using our infrastructure to provide that service. It did take a while to review, because we're a new office, and this was the first time it's been renegotiated in 10 years. And we did not see it as anything overly complicated or complex. Had it been so, we would have given you a deeper briefing on it.
Thank you for the update, and that's all I had.
Oh, sure, thank you.
Anything, any other questions? Can I get a vote?
Councillor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Yazi?
Yes.
Councillor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Beal?
Yes.
Councillor Bosmans?
Yes.
Okay, 8.5.1, we're going to mark as moot point. Okay, and all in favor of marking as moot, say aye. Aye. Great. 8.6.5, correct, is that the next one? Okay, great, making sure. Introduction of an ordinance approving the sale of 209 West College Drive, Durango, to the Durango and Silverton Narrow Gauge Railroad Company. Do I have a motion?
I move to introduce an ordinance approving the sale of 209 West College Drive, Durango, to the Durango and Silverton Narrow Gauge Railroad Company.
I'll second. Counsel discussion.
So I pulled this item because this was discussed in March of 2024, which was an executive session, so not open to the public. I will vote against this for the following two reasons, top two reasons. First of all, we do not need the money. We have about $110 million in total fund balance across all the, including restricted funds. I understand the Transportation Department would get any funds, and that department is funded fully for this year and can continue to be funded in future years.
So we're just going to pause. This is an introduction, so we're not supposed to have, this isn't supposed to be very...
Right, I mean, your, your actual consideration of the ordinance and your arguments against it are more proper at consideration. This is just introducing it. Basically, for the public will understand this will be discussed by the council at the next meeting.
Well, since I'm on the roll, do you want me to continue?
No, because it's out of order. So, yeah, it's just to say, should we have an introduction of an ordinance to be put on an agenda item in the future?
Yeah, and I'm against it, and I explain why.
Discretion of the chair. What I would suggest is that because it's an introduction, and he would like to keep speaking, is that you guys vote to grant him some brief period of time, not the five minutes or the three minutes, but because our rules are introduction, you can have brief comment. I would, by vote of the council, make that for a specific amount of time tonight. So you need a motion to limit the discussion to some time period.
I move to suspend the rules to allow two minutes of council comment for this introduction of ordinance.
I'll second.
Need to vote on that.
Can I get a vote?
Councillor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Yazi? Mayor Prota Mazi?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
So, uh, the first reason was that we don't need the money. We have a hundred and ten million in the fund. And the second reason is that this is a very valuable property for our community. It's a gateway to our downtown. We have gone through an RFP, a Request for Proposal Process, for this, uh, development of this property. Uh, this property could be used for a convention center, mixed-use farmer's markets, um, and many more types that benefit our community. The Durango and Silverton Narrow Gauge Railroad Company certainly would be a great entity, and they have also included an option at the time. But if this property would be sold, the city would have lost a great opportunity in assets with the only reason that I can see is to have the extra money on top of the over a hundred million dollars in fund balance. So instead of direction giving in an executive session, in session and negotiations behind closed doors, I would prefer to not introduce even this ordinance and to prefer some transparency in community involvement in the future of that property. Hence, I don't support introducing that ordinance.
So just for a little bit of background, because this is attributed to my office, there was an executive session back in March, as Counsel Bosman stated. The direction during that executive session was to negotiate. Those things are properly done in the executive session because if you put your negotiation strategy out in public, it puts you at a disadvantage. Um, the city manager did negotiate with the railroad in my presence, and then my office worked up the purchase agreement, which took some time because the railroad proceeded very cautiously, and that's been the reason for the time gap. So now that there's been an agreed-to price, and then my office has gone through the legalities of a purchase agreement, that's up for your consideration in playbook, introduction tonight, consideration at next week's or two weeks' meeting, and then final adoption after that.
Excellent. Any other comments? Can I get a vote?
Mayor Prota Mazi?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
No.
Mayor Beal?
Yes. Eight point six point six, introduction of an ordinance appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies for operating expenditures for the city of Durango, Colorado for the twenty twenty-five budget year. Do I have a motion?
I move to introduce an ordinance appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies for the operating expenditures for the city of Durango, Colorado, for the twenty twenty-five budget year.
I'll second.
Okay, limits, again, limited to council discussion. This is introduction of an ordinance, so.
Point of order, um, City Attorney, do we need to suspend the rules for each one to allow for two minutes?
I don't need two minutes. One second.
I, I'm asking the attorney.
I, I think that your motion for two minutes on introductions applies to the whole night tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
So my comment here is I do not support the ordinance, and I will provide detailed feedback under Agenda Item ten point one today and future meetings when this will be introduced, if not introduced, when the first reading will.
Any other comments? Can I get a motion? Or can I get a roll call? Sorry.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Beal?
Yes.
Mayor Prota Mazi?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
No.
Eight point six point seven, introduction of an ordinance appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies for capital expenditures for the city of Durango, Colorado, for the twenty twenty-five budget year. Can I get a motion?
I move to introduce an ordinance appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies for capital expenditures for the city of Durango, Colorado, for the twenty twenty-five budget year.
I'll second.
Council discussion?
Same comment. I do not support the ordinance, and I will make my comments on the Agenda Item ten point one today and future meetings when this gets.
Just for the record, ten point one is only a public hearing today. That's not for council comment. Um, if I'm correct, it will be on the next agenda when it's set that council can discuss the budget, but just for the record, so you're prepared. Okay, great. Uh, anyone else? Roll call.
Counselor Bosmans?
No.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Prota Mazi?
Yes.
Mayor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Okay, item ten, Public Hearings, ten point one, a public hearing on the city manager's twenty twenty-five proposed budget. Do I have a motion to open a public hearing? Oh, wait, no, not yet.
Yes, mayor. Sorry, we have Devin Schmidt, our Chief Financial Officer, uh, to do a presentation, and as, after the presentation, you are correct, mayor, we would open a public hearing, close the public hearing, and that is it. There is no action taken on this item.
Good evening, Mayor Council, Devin Schmidt, Chief Financial Officer for the city of Durango, um, here before you this evening, um, for a quick presentation on the public hearing for the city manager's twenty twenty-five proposed budget. Okay. So as part of the annual budgeting process and in compliance with Article five, Section six of the city charter, the city council showed shall adopt a final budget in a timely manner prior to the start of the ensuing budget year and pass the necessary appropriation ordinance. Um, a public hearing is to consider the twenty twenty-five city manager's budget on operating and capital. So, uh, just want to emphasize our commitment to, um, how this budget was developed, and so the commitment to enhancing our operations through strategic investment. Our primary focus will be strengthening existing services and ensuring that every dollar spent enhances the efficiency and effectiveness of our operations. We're proud to share that the Opportunity Fund, part of the general fund, has been actively utilized for transformative projects such as the housing innovation initiatives, the acquisition of the new police department, and the city hall buildings. These investments are not only about physical assets, but they are about fostering a community that thrives and ensures we can meet the needs of our residents effectively. As we move forward, we will continue to advance the initiatives outlined in our strategic plan, as this plan serves as our roadmap and guiding us as we incorporate insights from our performance excellence journey. By leveraging best practices from both the public and private sectors, we are positioning ourselves to deliver exceptional services to our community. Our commitment extends beyond infrastructure and includes a dedicated focus on completing ongoing projects and managing both capital and operating costs responsibly. We believe that by investing in our workforce through competitive compensation, competitive benefits, and targeted incentives, we are not only enhancing job satisfaction, but also improving service delivery for all of our residents. So to highlight a few, um, significant initiatives, um, and financial progress that will help shape community, our community's future. Um, first, the city council did approve those crucial strategic initiatives, funding for housing innovation and the purchase of the police, uh, city hall building. These decisions made with careful consideration of our community's needs were supported by the Opportunity Fund within the general fund. This funding enables the council to invest in projects that enhance our city's infrastructure and housing solutions. In terms of financial health, we have made impressive strides with our self-insurance program. We've transitions to a per employee per month model, which has significantly improved our financial standing. Our incurred but not reported is a type of reserve account used in the insurance industry as a provision for claims and/or events that have transpired, but not incurred. We have reached that in our self-insurance fund balance. Looking ahead to our capital projects, we have included several initiatives in the twenty twenty-five budget that are either at the design sage or at ninety percent design, which means the meticulous planning ensures that we'll have the most accurate budgeting possible, minimizing unforeseen costs as we move forward. We are also strategically timing our bidding process for capital construction projects, and many of these projects are aligned with the traditional construction season. We are starting the bidding this fall and for work to commence in twenty twenty-five. This approach not only maximizes contractor availability, but enhances our efficiency and our project timelines. Another exciting project is at the airport, where we're making significant progress on Phase one B of our project, which will incur expenses of twenty-six million dollars. Importantly, this project will be funded entirely through airport revenues, ensuring that no tax dollars are utilized. I want to highlight success in our energy and sustainability initiatives. The Energy Performance Contract has achieved remarkable results, saving three hundred and twenty-two thousand kilowatt hours of energy, translating to almost forty thousand dollars in cost savings and reducing our carbon footprint. For our workforce, I'd like to highlight, um, some strategic focus areas that are included in the twenty twenty-five budget. To support our employees, we're continuing the three percent cost of living adjustment for full-time staff, along with an opportunity for two percent high-performing incentives. This initiative ensures that our team is not only compensated fairly, but also rewarded for their exceptional contributions. Importantly, all full-time employees are now earning a livable wage, reflecting our commitment to fostering a supportive work environment. We've also introduced employee referral programs to encourage our staff to help us find new talent, as well as quarterly wellness incentives to promote health and well-being among our workforce. For those participating in our health savings account, we're contributing five hundred dollars for individuals and a thousand dollars for families, further supporting our employees' financial health. Our tuition assistance program has seen a six percent increase in utilization compared to last year, which demonstrates our commitment to employee development, lifelong learning. We've also participated in an internship and mentorship program that helps nurture the next generation of talent while providing valuable experiences for our current staff. In twenty twenty-four, our volunteer program successfully facilitated a hundred and forty-four hours of paid volunteer time, encouraging our employees to engage in their community and give back. Finally, we're enhancing our recruitment process to reduce the time to hire to just thirty-five days. This streamlined approach not only benefits our organization, but ensures we're able to attract top talent more efficiently. This is the city of Durango's strategic plan, and I will take you through the budget by each strategic plan goal area. So as we look ahead to fiscal year twenty twenty-five, our priorities are strategically focused on several key initiatives and organizational stewardship that will enhance our operations. First, council has directed the reauthorization of the two thousand five sales tax. This funding sources for sustaining essential services for police facilities and a city hall, as well as funding for parks, open space, and trails. Next, we're committing, committed to implementing our performance excellence by addressing opportunities for improvement. This will help us identify areas where we can enhance efficiencies and effectiveness across our operations, ensuring that we deliver the best possible services to our community. We will also be moving forward with the Government Finance Officers Association bidding for a new financial system, an enterprise resource program, which will streamline our financial processes and improve our overall management. Another key priority is the development of a, of a performance excellence dashboard. This tool will provide real-time insights into our performance metrics, enabling us to track progress, make data-driven decisions, and enhance our service delivery. Sorry about that. In addition, we will be, um, we are dedicated to the distribution of our indigenous land acknowledgement, including signage. This efforts reflects our commitment to recognize and respect the heritage of the indigenous communities in our region. We will seek to expand our water conservation planning and programmatic initiatives. And lastly, we'll continue our pursuit of electric vehicle replacements and maintenance training as market availability improves. In innovative housing and economic development, in order to address the critical needs of affordable housing, we must foster partnerships that combine public and private sector strengths. A key priority is to identify and leverage opportunities for our public-private partnerships to create additional housing inventory that is affordable, sustainable, and responsive to community needs. These partnerships allow us to maximize the impact of available resources, streamline the development process, and attract private investment needed to build more affordable units. Simultaneously, we will seek to diverse, we will seek out diverse grant funding opportunities that can help supplement our local efforts, including state and federal programs. In addition, we will pursue long-term sustainable funding strategies, ensuring that our programs are not reliant on short-term funding cycles, but are backed by robust, ongoing financial plans that will ensure the lasting success of our housing initiatives. Supporting both rental and ownership assistance programs remains a cornerstone of our strategy. These programs will continue to provide critical financial assistance to low-income and moderate-income individuals, helping them find and maintain stable housing. We will also work to build the capacity of local organizations and agencies to effectively implement and manage these programs, ensuring we can meet growing demand for assistance while maintaining quality and integrity. In economic progress and resiliency, as we look to the future, a vibrant and resilient economy is key to the long-term prosperity of our community. We will continue to provide essential economic development services with a focus on entrepreneurial support, incentive programs, and helping businesses navigate city services. In addition, through our business navigator, this initiative will provide bilingual support services to ensure that all business owners, regardless of their language proficiency, can access the resources they need to grow and succeed in our city. And then finally, under Durango's distinctive appeal, um, Durango is known for its unique character, rich history, and vibrant community. And in order to preserve and enhance the distinctive appeal, we must continue to improve the services we provide to the development community. This includes enhancing our building and permitting inspection services, ensuring we are timely and efficient, and that we meet the community's expectations. Finally, we'll begin the process of reviewing and updating the city's comprehensive plan, along with other planning documents. By taking a proactive approach to planning, we can ensure that Durango remains a place that residents and visitors will continue to cherish for years to come. And safety and quality of life, one of our top priorities is ensuring that the safety and well-being of our community. We're committed to reducing traffic crashes, violence, property theft, and nuisance crimes through strategic partnerships and local organizations for businesses and residents. For Durango's Public Spaces, we are defining a feature of our community, and we are dedicated to their continued stewardship, maintenance, and expansion. Key projects that align with our vision include ongoing development of the Animus River Trail, which provides both recreational opportunities and a vital connection throughout our city. We will continue to enhance this beautiful trail, ensuring that it remains a key asset for all residents. Additionally, we're excited to complete the improvements at Chapman Ski Hill. This project will bring new facilities and enhancements to one of our most beloved outdoor destinations. Our commitment to improving our recreational opportunities includes the initiation of Phase two development at the Durango Mesa Park, which will create additional outdoor spaces and activities that benefit our community's quality of life. In prioritizing employee satisfaction and operational excellence, the success of our Parks and Recreation Department is built on satisfaction and engagement of our employees, as well as the strength of our operational processes. We'll continue to focus on employee satisfaction and business operations and brand enhancements within the department. In our, expanding our library, resources, and services, uh, those are central to educational, cultural, and societal fabric of our community. To further enhance the services offered, offered by our library system, we will assess and explore alternative funding sources to expand our resources, improving programming and enhanced service delivery at the library. And for nine-one-one communications and operations, public safety, safety is only as strong as our ability to respond quickly and effectively as emergencies arise. As part of our ongoing commitment to enhancing nine-one-one operations, we will expand our quality assurance practices to ensure the highest standards for delivery. These efforts will focus on improving our communication systems and ensuring that our nine-one-one operators are equipped with the tools and training needed to respond to every call with precision, precision and care. In reliable infrastructure and community connectivity, the, one of the major infrastructure projects is the Phase one B terminal expansion at the airport. This expansion is critical to accommodating the growth demand for air travel in our region, ensuring that the airport remains a key asset for both residents and visitors. We will address a strategic approach for public works infrastructure, which is the backbone of our city, supporting everything from water and wastewater, roads and bridges and utilities. However, much of this infrastructure is aging and needs a significant upgrade. Our next major priority is developing a strategic approach to replacing the almost eight hundred million dollars worth of aging infrastructure. Another important initiative is the repair and maintenance of city sidewalks. Safe and accessible sidewalks are essential, essential for pedestrian safety and community mobility. We will develop a comprehensive strategy to identify, prioritize, and repair the most critical sections of our sidewalk network. Ensuring the safety of our students and pedestrians is a top priority for the city, and we're committed to maintaining and enhancing school safety zones, pedestrian crossings, and traffic signals. In expanding our public information on CIP projects, we look to have clear, consistent communications to the public, and will seek to improve in that area. Expanding microtransit and on-demand services as part of our commitment to transportation options, we will look to expand microtransit and on-demand transit services throughout the city. And implementation of funded multimodal projects as part of our broader vision for more, more connected and sustainable city, we will implement funding and multimodal improvement projects. These projects are designed to improve transportation options for residents, whether they are walking, cycling, or using public transit. And finally, to enhance convenience of our parking in Durango, we will implement a pay-by-sell option at parking meters. This modern payment method will allow users to pay for parking through their smartphones, making it easier for residents and visitors. An engaged and informed community, um, we will be looking to streamline workflow and leverage technology in municipal court. Um, there will be training for our new deputy clerks to modernize cities' processes. There will be training for our new deputy clerks to modernize cities' processes and rely on skills and capabilities of our staff. Expanding the court software for public information. And community engagement and increased public information access. This is part of the commitment to keeping the public informed and engaged, and we'll continue to strengthen the city's public information efforts. Building positive relationships with all members of the community is crucial for fostering the inclusive and connected city. We will enhance our community engagement efforts by implementing targeted outreach. This includes using tools like Engage Durango to solicit feedbacks, hosting public meetings, and making classroom or organizational visits to connect directly with various community groups. In our strategic workforce development goal area, we will increase competitiveness by improving wages, benefits, and incentives through the compensation study, creation of a robust onboarding and orientation program for all new employees. We will continue to leverage technology for human resources and risk initiatives, seeking to enhance our internship and mentorship programs and partnerships, and development and implementation of a workforce progression program. And here is our 2024 staffing across all funds. You can see in the columns that we do have the 2024 adopted, 2024 amended, as well as the 2025 position requests and what is seeking to be approved for 2025 as 452 full-time employees. This is a further definition or chart that explains what some of those positions are that are seeking to be approved in the 2025 budget. As a reminder, the public and community, as well as council, can review the 2025 budget online through OpenGov. And finally, we do have our combined fund summaries after reconciliation. So the general fund has revenues of $54.9 million with expenses of $56.2. We do have the 25% fund balance requirement. Some of the funds do have large spending, such as the Water Fund, related to capital improvement projects. Overall, there is sufficient reserves across the board to support ongoing operations for the City of Durango. In our capital funds, you can see that with the transition of our capital improvement projects from design to construction projects being at a 90%, in order to be included in the budget, there is sufficient funding as well as lots of capital projects looking to be completed. And the combined funds category shows a holistic view of the operating and capital funds for our enterprise funds for airports, sewer, trash, and recycle. And finally, state law requires that the budget hearing process also address the proposed uses of the Highway User Tax Fund distributions to local governments from the gasoline taxes imposed and collected by the state. These funds must be used for street purposes, and the city spends substantially more on its streets than it receives from the highway user taxes. In 2025, the distribution to the city of these taxes is approximately $566,000. In comparison, the 2025 proposed operating budget for streets in the general fund is $3.7 million. Finally, this is our timeline. So tonight, we had reconciliation at the study session. We're at the public hearing. November 19th is first consideration of the budget. December 3rd is final consideration in the mill levy certification. And by January 31st, city finance staff will submit the budget to the Department of Local Affairs and the Government Finance Officers Association for the distinguished budget award. And this concludes the staff presentation.
Excellent. Thank you. Do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
So moved.
One second. Council discussion? Can I get a vote? Mayor Protam Yazi?
Yes.
Counselor Yusuf?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Basman?
Yes.
Mayor Beal?
Yes. All right. Do we have anyone signed up for the public hearing?
We do not, mayor.
Is there anyone online?
No one has signed up online or in person on my list here.
Is there anyone in the room who wants to speak about the budget? Just as a reminder, this is one of two opportunities to give public comment on our 2025 budget. We'll have another one at the next city council meeting. So I will close the public hearing, and we will move along. We have item 11 resolutions. There's no items. And then item 12, we have first consideration of ordinances. 12.1, an ordinance for Land Use and Development Code text amendments regarding updates to occupancy standards and natural medicine statutory regulations. Okay. Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm Lily Oswald with the Community Development Department. I have two separate text amendment packages coming before you tonight, so this is the first of which. And this is regarding updates to occupancy standards and natural medicine statutory regulations. This is in alignment with strategic plan goal of organizational stewardship. There we go. Okay. I'll give a brief background of why you all are considering these changes tonight, an overview of the affected sections, and then a recommended action. So a little bit of background, there have been some recent statutory updates which have driven these text amendments. The first of which is the Natural Medicine Health Act of 2022. This was approved by Colorado voters in November of 2022, and it aimed to decriminalize the use of certain plants or fungi for persons 21 or older. And I will read in a moment what that definition of natural medicine is. The next was Senate Bill 23-290, which followed this Natural Medicine Health Act. This was signed into law by the governor of May, in May of 2023. And this Senate bill clarified and set regulatory framework for a regulated natural medicine program in Colorado. And the third piece here is of the different scope here, but House Bill 24-1007, which was passed by the Colorado General Assembly and went into effect already in July 1st of this year. This House bill prohibits local governments from setting residential occupancy limits based on familial relationships. So this House bill is very short. It's two paragraphs. But it made it very clear that municipalities can no longer set occupancy limits, including in land use and development codes and municipal codes in any sort of realm regarding the residential occupancy limits for familial relationships if people are related or unrelated for single-family dwelling unit-based uses. These first two regarding natural medicine. Let's see. Okay. I'm going to read a definition which is in Exhibit A of this text package for you. I'm not going to read the whole definition because it's about a page long. This is from Senate Bill 23-290, again, related to that natural medicine piece. "Natural medicine means a regulated natural medicine that is cultivated, manufactured, tested, stored, distributed, transported, transferred, or dispensed in accordance with provisions of the Colorado Natural Medicine Code and this municipal code. Natural medicine includes psilocybin and psilocin." In accordance with this Senate bill, we're adopting the language, which is by state code. This also includes, I might be tripping up here on these different words here, but dimethyltryptamine, ibogaine, and mescaline. And those three are only adopted if recommended by the board and approved by the director and the executive director of the State Licensing Authority for inclusion on or after June 1st, 2026. So for all intents and purposes, right now, people would only be applying for natural medicine businesses regarding psilocybin and psilocin. And again, that language comes straight out of that bill, and that is what other municipalities are adopting as well. And a big piece of, I guess, a distinguishing factor here between natural medicine versus when marijuana regulations were changing at the state level, municipalities had the option to opt in or not to adopting standards for regulated retail or medicinal marijuana businesses. We do not have that ability here. This is a Colorado law where, as I just defined it and a bunch of other things in this kind of complicated text package, natural medicine is an approved use by right for all jurisdictions within Colorado. But municipalities have the ability to say how, when, where, why, and all those good things before January 1st of 2025. So starting January 1st of 2025, people may apply for a business license through the city's clerks department for a natural medicine business. So this is code language to just help drive, to make it a better fit for the City of Durango instead of making it a blanket use by right everywhere. So the overview of the affected sections, again, this is all within Chapter 27 of the city's municipal code. The first is updating portions of this chapter to allow this updated use of natural medicine businesses. And there are a few different definitions in your Exhibit A of the regulations within the city. Again, this is an allowed provision per state law, but we have to adopt some sort of provision. The second piece is in the same vein, but adding definitions to Chapter 27 or our Land Use and Development Code to allow for natural medicine businesses and to update existing definitions to not conflict with these. Again, that's specifically for marijuana regulations, just to separate and have distinctions there. The third piece is updating provisions across portions of Chapter 27 related to occupancy standards to make sure that these are aligned with the statutory provisions applying occupancy standards for persons related or unrelated for single-family dwelling unit uses. And again, this bill already went into effect, and the Community Development Department has been operating within those veins. But we are formally adopting those provisions as required by law. Section 63133 of the Land Use and Development Code lines out the review criteria for text amendments. Those four criteria are listed here. Staff finds that these proposed amendments meet all applicable criteria. The text amendment process was a review by the Community Development Commission, and they recommended approval at their September 23rd, 2024 public hearing. On October 15th, city council introduced this ordinance. This is the first consideration of ordinance. It is slated for November 19th for the final reading, barring any changes there. These text amendments would go into effect in December of 2024, prior to these state deadlines. Staff did receive comments on these proposed redlines from the city's clerk and police departments. These comments have been incorporated into the exhibit redlines you see. And again, the Community Development Commission unanimously recommended approval of these text amendments during their September 23rd, 2024 meeting. There's a recommended motion for you here, and I can hopefully answer whatever questions you may have.
Excellent. Thank you for the presentation. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the ordinance, updating portions of Chapter 27 of the municipal code with the finding that the proposal complies with that criteria for text amendments as described in the City of Durango Land Use and Development Code.
One second. Great council discussion.
I thank you for the update. It seems that you are addressing the requirements proactively so it matches what we do in our city. So appreciate the background and the update.
Anyone else? Okay. Can I have a vote? Counselor Basman?
Yes.
Mayor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Yazi?
Yes.
Counselor Yusuf?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up, oh, you're staying.
I'm staying.
12.2, an ordinance for Land Use and Development Code text amendments regarding updates to lighting code provisions to align with the dark sky standards.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council, Lily Oswald with the Community Development Department. Again, the second of two Land Use and Development Code text amendments. This also aligns with the strategic plan goal of organizational stewardship. So again, I'm going to go over briefly the goals of this process and mention the many partners that are involved with kickstarting this, an overview of the affected sections, and then a recommended action. So to go a little bit more high level here, to align our city's lighting code provisions with dark sky lighting is a pretty big effort. And it's mostly for the goal of curtailing or reducing light pollution. And then according to the International Dark Sky Association, or IDA, light pollution is the human-made alteration of outdoor light levels from those occurring naturally. That's a pretty high-level definition of what it is. But again, these policies, in addition to a lot of other program and systemic changes within the city and policy changes, would be aimed to decrease light pollution. Some effects of decreased light pollution include reducing negative impacts on wildlife, reduced energy and money wasted spent on excessive lighting, or overlighting of areas after businesses are closed and things like that, and benefits human health and natural sleep patterns. There are a few images here just to begin to show sort of what we're talking about here tonight regarding shielding. So the picture on the top showing a hand over a light. The idea here is just to show that more light isn't always better light, doesn't always and often doesn't provide a more safe and secure environment, and instead just will lead to excessive lighting and money and energy wasted on excessive lighting while not increasing any sort of safety or security for humans or migratory patterns. The second image below are just a few high-level things that we'll be passing along to business owners, property owners, in terms of a resource of generally and at a high level, what these codes aim to provide. And this won't be something where every single property owner will have to retrofit any sort of lighting. A lot of people already do this. But lighting only what you need, so downcasting lights, using energy-efficient bulbs, and only bulbs as bright as you need. Shield lighting and direct these down. And then putting in some automatic timers and only lighting businesses uses, things like that, when you need it. This is all regarding exterior lights. And then choosing warm white light bulbs, so a color temperature piece I'll go into a little bit more here. Dark sky lighting is a certification that you can pursue through the International Dark Sky Association in Colorado Dark Sky. Sarah Tobler spoke briefly on that earlier. This is a goal which was headed by Visit Durango, and it's been in a partnership with the Community Development Department, City Clerks Department, Police Department. We've talked about different security measures. We've also been working with CDOT, LPEA, the Chamber of Commerce, and a few other regional stakeholders who were affected by this change to create a dark sky policy through this code and text amendment ordinance, which will achieve these different measures for that process. We have a couple of people here who can also, depending on your questions, potentially answer those better than I could. The proposed text amendments again are across Chapter 27 or our Land Use and Development Code within our municipal code, generally overhauling the provisions of our entire lighting code to align with dark sky standards and to be more enforceable for city staff. That's a big goal of this and understandable, again, both for city staff but also for the community. And then another pretty big crucial piece with this is affecting Section 6128, which is non-conforming lighting. When we have different provisions that go forward affecting use or signs or lighting or structures, it effectively makes whatever was in existence before that new ordinance went in a legal but non-conforming use sign. Enter it there. So the difference here is we're establishing parameters of non-conforming lighting to become dark sky compliant within a 10-year window. And that 10-year amortization rate for compliance has been seen by the International Dark Sky as a best practice. It's also a requirement for the policies to be moving forward to get that certification. It also will allow the city and city staff to create some educational measures, some resources for business owners and property owners, potentially partner with other regional stakeholders for financial incentives and other programs to help folks over time come into compliance. And then lastly here, adding definitions for new lighting provisions regarding that shielding, light trespass to not escape boundaries of your property, light pollution, and color temperature. So again, I've gone over these, but we're simplifying the code standards, applying that 10-year amortization rate to the non-conformity section, adding shielding and cutting off standards, and then applying a color temperature provision, which we don't have currently. And these are all in alignment with dark sky standards. The anticipated next steps match what I just went through for the last text amendment process. The first consideration of ordinance is tonight. It is slated for November 19th city council meeting as a final reading, and barring any change there, would go into effect in December of 2024 and would then be used as checking a box, so to speak, for our other regional stakeholders to pursue that dark sky certification process. Another piece I wanted to go over was, let's see. Yeah. So the shielding and cutoff, we've gotten a few questions about what that looks like. And again, these lights are mostly in effect now. And our code enforcement officer, who we have with the Community Development Department and other city staff, have already been working with a lot of folks on dark sky measures for lighting. Our existing sign code already has dark sky policies incorporated. So our signs already have those provisions, but we would just really be working with folks to make sure that there's downcast and shielded lights is the biggest piece here. And again, And again, the review criteria is in section 6313-3 of the land use and development code. Staff finds that these proposed amendments meet all applicable criteria, specifically aligning with health, safety, and general welfare of the community. And in your staff report tonight as well, we've outlined how this is in alignment with adopted plans and policies specific to the sustainability plan, comprehensive plan, and strategic operating plan. Staff did receive comments on these red lines from the International Dark Sky Association. Pretty comprehensive red lines and comments from these partners. And these comments have been incorporated into exhibit A red lines. The community development commission unanimously recommended approval of these text amendments at their meeting on September 23rd with one change, and that change has also been incorporated into the red lines for you. It was just a minor language piece. And we have a recommended motion for your consideration.
Go ahead, motion.
Shall I just go ahead and move to approve the ordinance updating portions of chapter 27 of the municipal code with the finding that the proposal complies with the criteria for text amendments as described in the city of Durango land use and development code?
All second. Council discussion?
I was just going to say, I think this is great that we're moving forward with this. I remember I'm from the Netherlands. Many years ago, we spoke about light pollution from greenhouses. And to see this also in a place like Durango where you really have dark skies, if you want to, is a good step. So, thank you.
Great. Can I get a vote? Mayor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Basmonds?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Prota Miazzi?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12.3, an ordinance amending in pertinent part, the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 4, Animals, Article 1 in General, Section 4-1. Mark, Mr. Morgan.
So, we don't want it to happen.
Great. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve an ordinance amending in pertinent part, the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 4, Animals, Article 1 in General, Section 4-1, Definitions.
All second. Council discussion? All right, can I get a vote? Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Prota Miazzi?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Basmonds?
Yes.
Item 12.4, an ordinance amending in pertinent part, the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 4, Animals, Article 1 in General, Section 4-14, Vicious Animals. Mr. Morgan?
Same thing. This is just giving a misport jurisdiction to deal with vicious animals.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve an ordinance amending in pertinent part, the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 4, Animals, Article 1 in General, Section 4-14, Vicious Animals.
I will set, okay. Counselor Basmonds seconded. Council discussion? All right, vote. Mayor Prota Miazzi?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Basmonds?
Yes.
Mayor Beal?
Yes.
Item 12.5, an ordinance amending in pertinent part, the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 4, Animals, Article 1 in General, Section 4-99, disposition of vicious animal being held on complaint. Mr. Morgan?
Again, this is actually given the court authority to issue an order on how to deal with vicious, when the court has determined an animal is vicious, meaning it's hurt someone, the court can issue an order relative to that.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve an ordinance amending in pertinent part, the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 4, Animals, Article 1 in General, Section 4-99, disposition of vicious animal being held on complaint.
Seconds.
Council discussion? Can I get a vote? Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Beal?
Yes.
Mayor Prota Miazzi?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Basmonds?
Yes.
Item 12.6, an ordinance amending in pertinent part, the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 4, Animals, Article 1 in General, Section 4-8, Fighting Animals.
Again, there's an update of that section of the code allowing the court to deal with anyone in the city who is fighting animals.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve an ordinance amending in pertinent part, the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 4, Animals, Article 1 in General, Section 4-8, Fighting Animals.
Seconds.
Council discussion? Can I get a vote? Counselor Basmonds?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Prota Miazzi?
Yes.
Mayor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Right. Item 13, public comment on city matters not scheduled for a vote tonight. Can I get a reading?
Comments by stating your city-related topic, your full name, and if you are a resident of the city of Durango. Make your comments directly to the council. Do not expect a response from the council or staff. Comments are limited to three minutes per person unless modified by council. Unused time is not transferable to other speakers. Comments must be specific to city matters. Profanity, hate speech, personally derogatory remarks, or other speech that is disruptive to the meeting will be ruled out of order by the chair and any remaining time will be forfeited by the speaker. Exceeding the time limit infringes on the rights of others and is out of order. Only a majority vote of the council can modify time limits. Please note, you must sign up prior to the mayor calling the item on the agenda. Signing up after the item is called will result in your name not being called to speak.
If anyone's. Seven people signed up. The first is James Forleo.
Thank you, City Council, for the job you do. You, yes, I'm speaking on this, what I call, an historic ruling. Sounded like a trivial thing, but it is affecting everyone across the nation. And what this federal judge found, and here's 10 environmental groups suing the Environmental Protection Agency for not following their own Toxic Substance Control Act. So this is the first time Citizens Group won and beat the EPA and found that they had been negligent in following their own rules. So what they found was that water fluoridation poses an unreasonable risk to children and to children's brains. So, I'm going to get these out. So the scientific, this was the first time that scientific evidence has been reviewed under oath. So the claims that profluoridationists have been making for 75 years were fine, found not to be scientifically reasonable. And it did not uphold the rules. So they were, in fact, not scientifically supported. The ruling did not specify exactly what the EPA needed to do, but it presented an unreasonable risk. And one thing the EPA cannot do, this is the ruling by the judge, is in the face of this court's ruling, is to ignore that risk. So the EPA is obligated by law as a result of this to restrict or eliminate the risk. So they have to change, the EPA has to change what they're doing in relationship to fluoride throughout the country. So that has not been yet been determined, but they have to make a change. Because they found that we fluoridated 0.7 milligrams per liter and they found that 0.2, one point in IQ is lost for every 0.2 milligrams per liter. So we are affecting children's brains and we can't ignore that. Another factor that has happened is the Cockney Report has, which is a scientific review, a world scientific review, has suggested that fluoridation is not as effective as it was because we're getting it from so many sources right now. So they suggested that it's only 0.4 benefit. It does not benefit 60% of the population, as was initially said. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Matt Hogberg.
Good evening. Thank you for a moment to address a public safety concern. I am from Portland, Oregon. I'm a new resident here in Durango. I moved into the River Roost Apartments. And unfortunately, that property is not safe. I'm just going to drink. Thank you. During the last three weeks that I've lived there, I've had a knife pulled on me. I've had people threatening me with weapons. The property is a thoroughfare for people coming off of the river. And I do know that there's a lot of great efforts underway to be able to address what's happening along the river and the bike path. Unfortunately, I feel that those efforts are effectively driving the problem onto our property. There are people sleeping in the lot. There are people sleeping behind Albertson's. The people at Albertson's are welcoming this problem to their property. I've called over there. They're allowing them to park near our property. The entire area coming off of that bike path right there is littered with glass. Even today, there is evidence of hard drug use. I can barely walk my dog on and off of this property without having an altercation. It's been devastating for me coming off a west coast city that has been very dangerous. I'm from Colorado. I have family here. I'm happy to be a member of this community. The property, Gray Star Property Management, has decided that their solution is just to tell me I can leave. That's not a solution to me. It's not. I need a place to live. I've recently undergone surgery to prevent more cancer. I'd like to be able to remain at this property and make it a safe place to live. I need the help of the people here in this committee to make that happen. Trying to think of some other examples as far as what's been going on on the property, but I have been calling the police daily. During the altercation where a knife was pulled, I was on the property and my dog was playing with another tenant's dog. They were, happened to be an off-duty police officer for the Fort Lewis campus. They called that one in. But basically, almost on a daily basis, this has become very problematic. I don't know what else to do other than to file a lawsuit against Albertson's and Gray Star Property Management at this time as far as just providing a peaceful and safe place to live. And I hope that, you know, moving forward, that any efforts that are happening along this river are being taken in, you know, the property and the 200 residents that live there are being taken into consideration as we're dealing with, you know, obviously nationwide issues and accelerated crime and homelessness. I do hope that the people that are, that are, you know, along the river and using drugs are also given opportunities to get help and not just pushed along. And I really hope that, you know, this issue isn't just continuously dumped on this property and that River Roost and the people that are living there are, you know, considered to be valued members of the community. And I hope that we continue to try and protect them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is John Rothschild. Is there a John here?
He is a crank of Dennis.
Okay, you can tell me, get an email city council if you'd like with comments. Next up is Angela Pinkerton.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, citizens of the community. My name is Angela Pinkerton. I'm a Durango resident and I'll be talking about the fluoridation issue. I wanted to thank Dr. Mahmoud and Courtney on their very incredible and impressive presentation that they provided. I'm a pediatric dentist serving the community for 15 years now. My colleague, Dr. Westine, and I are considered the authority on childhood cavity incidents in this region. And we can say without question that Durango has experienced a protective effect on the community fluoridation as compared to the surrounding counties with non-fluoridated water areas. We discussed this topic several years ago and I shared my personal experience in which most of my significant patients who require high order of care in a hospital setting are typically under the age of four. They have more than half of their teeth decayed or have to be extracted from decay. And approximately 75% of that population is residing in a non-fluoridated area. This study comparing the water fluoridation and the lower IQ does not relate to any models in our community. The primary reason is that it does not apply to the toxic levels of the fluoride concentrations discussed. Levels above 1.5 milligram per liter are toxic and are doubled to the metered supplement in our water supply. And the city meticulously monitors this to ensure the water fluoridation is an optimal amount to provide the dental protection and to prevent overexposure. The results of this study are weak and they provide little insight into the correlation with the fluoride in the IQ, admittedly because their studies compare, compared were too dissimilar, too small sample size and were not biologically plausible. A recent article in, on the performance of the Durango 9R School District suggested that the students' academic performances are meeting and exceeding the state standards and performance frameworks. And I would further think that supports that we are not experiencing a global cognitive deficit related to our community fluoridation exposure. One other item to consider, Governor Polis released the 2025-26 state budget, which represents a proposal for a dental rate cut of $1 billion of Medicaid funding for dental care. And in light of this potential decrease to the access to care, I think we should consider, is it what we should consider, reducing one of our most affordable, effective layers of protection? Thank you very much for your time in considering these points of my expertise and opinion on this topic. I'm charged to serve the community in a manner that provides the strongest health benefits for the greatest number of people on fluoridation since the 1950s. Has continued to be our smartest, safest modality for protecting against dental disease.
Thank you. Sorry. No, you're great. Thank you so much. Next up is Katrina Blair.
Thank you so much for letting me speak and your attention, all the council members and mayor. Yeah, Katrina Blair and I grew up in Durango in town. I currently live in the county a few miles out of town, but I'm also wishing to speak on fluoride. And I'm coming from a place of common sense and intuition and connection to the desire for health for our community, which I think we all have in common. But there's something about clean air, clean water, clean food, and a big part is getting chemicals out of those things. And when I do a little research on where our fluoride comes from, it's a byproduct of an industry such as pesticides and aluminum and fertilizer. And when we have a pharmaceutical-grade fluoride, such as what we get in toothpaste, that actually has been purified to a degree, but the fluoride that goes into the water has been not processed on any level. So it's just the raw byproduct from these industries. And it contains, you know, arsenic and lead and some of these things that just intuitively, no way would I want a chronic source of that coming into my water, which I need to survive. So it may or may not protect the teeth. There's so much research on both sides, but it is a risk. And that is becoming more obvious. And I think, you know, living in this world, there's so much influence and propaganda or information that we have to weed through or whatever, not, I love weeds, but that we have to go through. And I appreciate your curiosity because that's all we can do. We don't absolutely know anything, but we can be curious and open and look a little deeper than sometimes what is like presented. And for me, when I get curious, then I say, whoa. Because I got a tour of the water treatment plant some years ago. And when I saw the bags of the fluoride, it had a skull and crossbone on the bag. It was real, you know, not to say, of course, in that concentration, of course, it would be extremely toxic, but a minute amount constantly builds up also. And I think, I went and looked at all the toothpaste and the cheapest toothpaste that you can buy, like that I could find at least was $1.19. And it has the good kind of the pharmaceutical fluoride in it. So when I think of, oh, we want to make sure our underprivileged kids have access, that's the cheapest toothpaste you can buy. And it has fluoride. So it's pretty easy to make sure our kids are getting some. So it's pretty easy to make sure our kids are getting some a good source of it. But to put it in everyone's water and medicate everyone, that doesn't feel correct. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Next up is Adam Howell.
My name is Adam Howell, and I'm a resident of Durango. The city of Durango's water fluoridation program for the alleged dental benefits needs to end. We've been talking about the recent federal lawsuit that was filed to end the addition of fluoridation chemicals in the US drinking water due to fluoride's neurotoxicity. So I just want to read you an excerpt from the judgment of that lawsuit that ended in September, it might get appealed. The judge said plaintiffs have proven by a preponderance of the evidence that water fluoridation at the level of 0.7 mg per liter, the prescribed level of fluoridation in the United States, presents an unreasonable risk of injury to health or the environment without consideration of costs or other non-risk factors, including an unreasonable risk to a potentially exposed or susceptible subpopulation under the conditions of use. So the court then ordered the EPA to begin rulemaking pursuant to the Toxic Substances Control Act. It's unclear when this rulemaking will occur or if the EPA is going to appeal. But on to the current situation here. Last time I inspected the pallet of sodium fluoride bags up at the water treatment plant, the city of Durango was using a toxic sodium fluoride that sourced from China. I confirmed the manufacturer was Shanghai Mint Chem Development Company. On the front of the bags of this powdery drug is an image of a skull and crossbones with the word toxic written underneath it. So this product is then shipped to our city by Solvay Fluorides. I looked up a product safety summary published by Solvay Fluorides. Says the ingestion of sodium fluoride may cause salivation, burns of the mouth and throat, and irritation of the esophagus and stomach, nausea, blood vomiting, abdominal pain, diarrhea, risk of convulsions, list loss of consciousness, deep coma, and heart failure. Hypocalcemia with nervous system disorders and cardiac arrhythmia may also occur. Ingestion of sodium fluoride may be fatal. So this warning from the manufacturer confirms the claims of the lawsuit saying that fluoridated water poses the risk of neurotoxicity. On top of that, the Food and Drug Administration has said that sodium fluoride is a drug, not a nutrient. After all that, why would I want this questionable drug added to my water, knowing that the manufacturer and a slew of expert witnesses in this lawsuit have reported that it's toxic and is known to lower the IQ of children? Ultimately, the federal, state, and local officials are going to have to stop siding with private interest groups that want to push this medical treatment upon the population. A bottle of fine powdered sodium fluoride that people can mix in their own water is available for purchase on the internet. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last person signed up is Ellie or Eli Morris.
Thank you, you had it right the first time, I'm Ellie Morris, I'm a resident of Durango. What I'm going to say might be mute because y'all did have a vote on this, so I'm really just offering my support on the dark sky. I lived in Flagstaff recently. It was is the first international dark sky city. I was able to go back this summer. I lived in three different locations because I was there for a training for the whole summer. Every place I went, I could see the Milky Way. I live a few blocks from here, and I cannot see it as easily here. When I first moved to Durango, I thought it was bigger than Flagstaff because it's brighter. But Durango's what around 19,000, 20,000 people? Flagstaff is 76,000. So I'm really excited that y'all are can pass the vote to do the ordinance. I hope it goes through, and I just want to offer my support and thanks that we are moving towards a healthier night sky for all of us, us and our four-legged friends.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the people who have signed up.
And no one online.
They signed up on that same list, so no.
Perfect. All right, next item, 14, other new business. We have 14.1, a motion to convene as the local Durango Local Licensing Authority to conduct a hearing to consider the suspension or revocation of a restaurant and bar liquor license for JAM Culinary Concepts LLC, DBA Primus Restaurant. Do I have a motion to convene as the Durango Local Licensing Authority?
So moved.
Great. I'll second. Council discussion? Can I get a vote?
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Yazi?
Yes.
Counselor Basman?
Yes.
Mayor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Great, all right, so now to consider 14.1, do I have, do I do a motion or are you talking?
So you've now you're convening as the exec, as the board to consider have a hearing on the revocation of a license. So we need to call and see if there's anyone here from JMA Culinary Concepts? Don't see one, I can report to the council that the city attorney's office is recommending bringing this hearing because the individual running that business has abandoned the facility and the license and is in arrears in taxes in excess of $2,500. So with no one here to present their side, the hearing can be closed.
All right, um, should we close the hearing? Okay, great, and then 14.2, a resolution to approve the revocation of a restaurant and bar liquor license for JAM Culinary Concepts LLC, DBA Primus Restaurant. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second, do we have council discussion?
You can, I'll just report that the the revocation of this license then allows us to issue a new license at that location, which is the purpose of doing the formal revocation.
Perfect. Can I get a vote?
Mayor Protam Yazi? Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Basman?
Yes.
Mayor Beal?
Yes. Do we need to convene again, or are we just still convening?
We're still convening.
We're still convening and we're on 14.3. This is in regards to consider the suspension or revocation of a lodging and entertainment liquor license for Bella Vita LLC, DBA The Woodhouse Spa. So I'm assuming, is there anyone here representing this organization?
Right, you'll recall that we did a status hearing at our last meeting to see if anyone could report what was going on. So we've had no contact with the individual who held this, I shouldn't say we have no contact. There has been some contact, but that generally appears as I'm going to do my paperwork and then she doesn't or he doesn't. I don't know if it's a male or female. So at this point, if there's no one here, I would just submit to you that this person has abandoned that license and failed to communicate with the city, longer holds a lease at that particular location, is not entitled to continue to operate a liquor license.
Excellent, okay, so we're going to close that. And then we're on 14.4, a resolution to approve the revocation of a lodging and entertainment liquor license for Bella Vita LLC, DBA The Woodhouse Spa, Day Spa. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Council discussion? All right, can I get a vote?
Mayor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Basman?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Yazi?
Yes.
All right. Do we have to leave being the liquor license? Okay.
You can just announce that you're back.
We're back as City Council. 14.5, a resolution, amending resolution R-2021-2007 on the on the November 19th regular city council meeting agenda. Counselor Woodruff?
Yes, so thank you, Mayor. I, at the previous meeting, was trying to work alongside council to work together to figure out a possibility to remove the the amendment in resolution R-2021-2 or dash 007 regarding the need to have both a pro and a con position statement when presenting items to council that were at the state or federal level. So that was not approved at that council meeting. So I followed Counselor Basman's suggestion to provide the exactly what I wanted to be taken out of that amendment, and that amendment was, I don't have that in front of me. Do we have, does that by chance that language up?
The city council, the right?
Yeah, it was, there was one statement out of that full resolution that I decided that would be best to omit. And I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me, it was in the council packet.
I can read it out.
Yeah.
The the language that you according to is the end, I don't want to have removed states, the city council directed staff to prepare an additional amendment regarding directing staff when possible to provide an opportunity for both sides of an issue to be presented when staff request a letter from city council in support or of in support of type of, I think, in support of opposition to propose legislation.
Thank you. And so the rest of that resolution would remain the same. It would just, I would move to strike that language out of the resolution.
So do we need a motion for that?
Yeah.
So you're just under new business?
Yeah.
So a motion in favor means that resolution would then appear on the next agenda under resolutions.
Okay, I will make a motion to amend resolution R-2021-2007 on the November 19th regular city council meeting agenda to put that on the city council agenda.
Second.
Council discussion? Limited, because just to get it on the agenda, right? Yes, okay, good. Yeah, yeah, great, go ahead.
No, I think it's, I appreciate you making the change and the clarification. I had one clarifying question, but you actually answered it already. And that is that you, this sentence comes out of the existing, the original and adopted resolution, and that's the only change, so I will support that.
Council, anyone else?
Okay, so removing that portion of the resolution, what's the impact of that?
So I mean, that's something that's better discussed when it actually comes up for a consideration at the next meeting. This is kind of like introducing an ordinance, you have to have council support to move an item forward. So now that the general topic has been laid out, that type of discussion is better served at the next meeting.
Right, can I get a vote?
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Yazi?
No.
Yes.
Mayor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Basman?
Yes.
Okay, 14.6, consideration to place a resolution on the November 19th regular city council directing the city manager and staff to provide an update and presentation on the presentation on the proposed improvement to the College Mesa Water Treatment Plant Water Treatment Capacity Technology, including an evaluation and recommendation on fluoridation of the water versus other methods, Counselor Basman?
Yes, we had a little presentation that covers some of this, include public comment, but this is a bit of a broader topic I have here, so I'm going to just make the motion to place a resolution on the November 19th regular city council meeting directing the city city manager and staff to provide an update and presentation on the proposed improvement to the College Mesa Water Treatment Plant, the water treatment capacity and technology, including an evaluation and recommendation on fluoridation of the water versus other methods.
I'll second, so we can talk about it.
Before you guys get into it, can I can I apologize for the typo? Because that's not on Counselor Basman's, that's on me. It says on the presentation, that obviously should not be in there. So my apologies, Counselor Basman, that typo is the attorney's office and not his.
I thought it was because I didn't have my glasses on. Okay, limited discussion, this is just to get it on an agenda to be discussed.
Yeah, so the limited discussion, because I will not go into the details, but I wanted to have this on a future agenda, so we and our community can be informed on the water treatment improvements that we are designing now, the capacity of the water, so this is beyond fluoridation, and treatment options. The the design of the water treatment improvements is already in the budget of the city. That's the design is, the design alone is $110,000, and we really have no clue what it may cost for construction. And it's also not very clear, or limited information has been available, on what the improvements entail, what capacity we're going to and why, and the treatment options considered. And then how this fits into the bigger picture of our water supply if you take into account Lake Nighthorse Water. And that's where we're spending another $2 million on studies. So we've got some of the information from the state has been provided, appreciate that. We heard some public comment, and this is only fluoridation, that's not really, if it's my understanding, I'm not a professional in this field, but I think fluoridation is not the treatment of water, it's just a supplement to the water to help with dental, whatever the word is, prevention. But I think the bigger picture is what what are we doing, especially since we're designing, and we're going to spend a lot of money on this water treatment plant. So if if there's an interest for counselors to have that type of information, then we'll see it in the vote.
I would support this with the exception of the fluoridation of the water. We have talked about this as a community as early as 2017, January 30th. We had spoken about this, and we had a public hearing. We had some people here that were also at that public hearing. We had 17 medical professionals in favor of fluoridation, two were opposed. We put that ballot initiative out there and it failed two to one. So the people have spoken, the data hasn't changed, the science hasn't changed. To me, I'm happy to talk about the the capital improvements and how we are looking at our our water treatment, but fluoridation does not be a, need to be a part of that conversation, in my opinion. We are doing everything right. I had a time, an opportunity to look at the analysis and to look over the scientific, quote unquote, scientific report from the NTP, and I don't think that is necessary to discuss because we've already had that discussion.
So this is a friendly amendment?
I can make the friendly.
Oh, no, wait, no.
Hang on, nope. We're in discussion right now, and then he can modify, you would have to modify your.
New business.
New business.
We're still on our new business.
But he hasn't done that yet.
No.
I'm just going to say, we hadn't updated the budget retreat about the water treatment plant. I don't want to hash out fluoridation for the reason that Dave Woodruff brought up, and I'm okay with the information that we have at the current time for the direction that we're going, so. Anything else? Modify, or are we just voting?
A lot of times it's a waste of time for me, but I'm going to modify the motion to see if there's any support to exclude the fluoridation.
Excellent, do we, can I get a vote?
Mayor Protam Yazi?
No.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
No.
Counselor Basman?
Yes.
Mayor Beal?
No. Hey, item 15, executive session. 15.1, a motion to convene an executive session to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, sale, or transfer of an interest in certain identified properties for future affordable housing development and determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiation and direct negotiators as permitted by CRS- CRS 24-6-402A and E to receive legal advice regarding the use of certain funds for the same pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024B. Do I have a motion?
Just move as read.
Move as read.
Second.
Council discussion? Can I get a vote?
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Beal?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Yazi?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Basman?
Yes.
Okay.
And then Mayor, if you can just note the time?
The time is 7:56 PM, and we are going to executive session. Um, the time is seven fifty six P M. And we are going to executive session.
Um. All right, here we go. We're back at it. The time is now eight thirty one P M and the executive session has been concluded. The participants in the executive session were Alex Gano, Jim Martin, Mike French, Jose Madrigal, Mark Morgan, Olivier Bosmans, Dave Wardriff, Gil D'Yasi, Moles Youssef, and Jessica Buell, myself. For the record, council met an executive session to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, sale, or transfer of an interest in certain identified properties for future affordable housing development and to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiation and direct negotiators as permitted by C R S twenty four dash six dash four oh two A and E and receive legal advice regarding the use of certain funds for the same pursuant to C R S twenty four dash six dash four oh two four and B. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the executive session or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open's meeting law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. See none. The next item on the agenda is item sixteen, sixteen point one, introduction of an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of land and the execution of unnecessary land acquisition documents for the purpose of affordable, future affordable housing development.
Still moved?
A second? Council discussion? Okay, can I get a vote?
Councilor Bosmans?
Yes.
Councilor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Yasi?
Yes.
Mayor Buell?
Yes.
Councilor Woodruff?
Yes.
All right, next item seventeen is adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.